Call a meeting to order. In accordance with 940 CMR 29.10, remote participation adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee April 17, 2014. Committee men O'Hair, committee men Giggy and student rep representative Karen Vinal will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely. No in person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
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 Here.
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 Yeah. Public appearance, we're going to suspend the public appearance portion and go on right into the meeting. School community communications. Report of the superintendent. Report of the student representative. There is no report tonight.
Can we just check and see if she's online?
Karen. Are you here?
No.
I guess not.
So Karen, it was her senior night for her swimming team, so she's going to be unable to be here. But the report is in your packet to view.
Approval of the minutes for the January 21st meeting, need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Report of the treasurer. Move the way of the reading. Move the way of the reading. Tassius. And Mr. Sheen.
Mr. Gitchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Need to approve the expenditures out. Three million, one hundred and forty seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion.
One second.
Mr. Gitchia?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Report of general counsel. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Report. I'm happy to report that currently we have 106 seniors out on co-op. That was as of today. I know the, the report that was in your packet reported 95 at the end of January, but I'm happy to report that currently we have 106 seniors out on co-op. We also have three juniors currently on co-op. And we have a handful of students pending co-op within the next week. So again, thank you to Stacy Bazanson, who's doing a great job specifically during other pandemic with trying to get students out on co-op. The next item on my agenda is the After Dark Planning Grant to expand. And I'm going to be looking for an approval to continue this partnership with the City of Lowell. So as you know, for the 2020-2021 school year, we are currently having an after dark program in the areas of machine technology and programming and web development. And we're moving forward with a planning grant to add HVAC and auto technology with 10 students in each program to start for year one, and then adding another 10 in year two. So I am looking, looking for your approval to continue with this partnership with the city, with Lowell Public Schools for their 21-22 school year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Gitchia? Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Because I'm reading through it. One of this says Greater Lowell, Greater Lowell will provide. It says in year two, provide eligible Lowell high students the opportunity to participate in co-op in the spring semester.
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna, are they going to be after we fulfill all our kids that we're going to go get them co-op jobs? Or are they going to be taking co-op jobs away from our students?
So the idea is not to be taking away co-op jobs. Part of the cooperative education opportunity is for them to seek out employers that, that could employ them and we develop partnerships with those employers. So we're going to work with them and Lowell Public Schools to try to find those students' co-op jobs. It's part of the after dark programming.
I just, we use machine shop. So we have 16 eligible students for co-op. And we have 10 Lowell high kids in, so that makes it 26 eligible students. Are our kids going to get up first? Stacy goes and calls machine shop A. And they need nine, they'll take nine. Is it going to be a mixture of Greater Lowell kids and Lowell high kids or is it going to be our nine first?
I think the priority would be Greater Lowell technical high school students and the students that best have the skills to meet the job requirements.
Okay. Okay. And our kids are eligible for co-op in their spring semester.
Of their junior year, correct.
Where the after dark over would be.
Students would not be eligible to their, to their senior year due to the fact that they would need to be two years, having two years of technical experience before they can go.
So that would give our kids options to now co-op.
Prior to.
Prior to. Well, I understand that, but our kids are here three years and these kids are here two years. So it's kind of their sophomore year, our students are here. Lowell high kids are coming in their junior year. So we already have a year under our belt. We use the, call it the fall semester. So we have three semesters under our belt before we're eligible.
And they're not going to be able to go out till they have three semesters as well?
Well, no, because if it's going to be the senior year, yeah, okay, you're right, I'm sorry. Okay.
You're good.
No, I, no, I just. You'll call it.
Mr. Gitchia?
No.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on my agenda, I'd like to invite the Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Barton up. And Mr. Barton, I will provide you with the proposed updates to the reopening plan. So tonight, we're proposing revisions to the reopening plan to reflect a hybrid reopening to Greater Lowell Technical High School beginning on February 22nd. And that hybrid reopening would, would be as follows. And if you turn to page eight and nine in, in the reopening plan, you can follow along as I talk about, try to generally summarize what they are. So we'll be reopening on February 22nd in hybrid mode B, phase one. And this model is based on four to six feet of physical distancing guidelines in, in our technical areas and six feet guidelines in our academic areas. With that said, our students in grade nine will be assigned to attend one day of in-person learning and four days of remote learning. And this would mean that we would have 25% of our ninth graders in the building rotating on a daily basis. In addition to the one day each week, they will be coming into school on Wednesdays at 50% capacity on a rotating basis to receive hands-on exploratory experience for those exploratories that they only experience virtually. Grade 10 through 12 students will be attending school for two days in hybrid mode B, phase one. And their academic programming will be all remote. As far as our students with disabilities and English language learners and students at risk for failing for the year, those students will be coming to school on their academic week for four days. For four days, with Wednesday being a remote day for those students. So that is hybrid mode B, phase one. We will remain in phase one for two to four weeks, depending on the public health data and discussions with the teachers bargaining unit as well as the Paris unit and looking at the health data together to make a decision on whether or not we would move forward with hybrid B, phase two. And again, that would be after two or four weeks. We would need, need to stay within that two-week timeframe to maintain a balance between our A and X week. In hybrid mode B, our grade nine students will continue to come one day a week at 25% capacity, with Wednesdays being a day where they come in at 50% capacity, rotating every other Wednesday to make up for those technical shops that they did not have an in-person experience in. Our grade 10 through 12 students would now be coming to school four days a week, with Wednesday being a remote day so that the freshmen can come to school and participate in exploratory that they did not get an in-person learning to. Our high needs, our special education, our English language learners would continue to come to school four days a week. Monday and Wednesday would be a remote day for those students. And, and that's really a summary of our return to the building. Any further increases in student participation would be determining on relaxing the physical distancing and lifting the restrictions to transportation. Again, those, those other changes on page eight and nine and moving along with the other changes to the opening plan. I'm going to have Mike talk a little bit about the instructional time and the daily period schedules.
First of all, good evening, everyone. If you want to follow along with me, I'll, I'll begin on page 15. And without going any, going into too much detail, as the superintendent said, we're following the traditional A next week schedule. With upperclassmen, the main emphasis is in-person learning and the technical programs, initially starting with 50% of students. So essentially that means that they would come Monday and Tuesday and Thursday and Friday combinations. Wednesday, they would be, be remote. The following week, they would conduct or take their academic classes remotely. For freshmen, freshmen are coming in, a quarter of them a day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday is the emphasis on exploratory. So starting the week of February 22nd and going to the week of April 14th, they will have their exploratory experience in, in hands-on experience, 50% of them. The students that, freshmen that aren't in exploratory would be in their academic classes remotely. So if you were to look at page 16, you'll see some, just some examples that people can refer to so that they can see different scenarios of schedules. So if someone's a Monday kid, they would be coming on Tuesday. If you're a Thursday kid, you'd be coming on Friday. And it gives them a sense of when they would be in-person or remote. Our intention is to communicate this out to the parents next week. So parents and students, so they have a full understanding of the schedule, transportation, lunch schedule in, in detail. So I don't want to reiterate what the superintendent said in our executive summary, but this gives you some more, sort of a magnified description.
So the next revision would be under the Cooperative Education Program on page 25 and 26. And the changes to this revision include the juniors now being eligible to go out on co-op as of February 8th. It also includes that the early childhood students could now participate in co-op placements as long as the placement follows the ECE COVID-19 childcare playbook, which is a very, very long playbook. Co-op is available to those juniors and seniors participating in hybrid learning only. Co-op will not be available to those students who continue to remain remote. The next changes are on page 26 to athletics. And we will be participating in fall two sports beginning February 22nd. And those sports that we are proposing to participate in are football, volleyball, and game day cheer, which is cheerleading without competitions. And we got, those are the, the updates in regards to athletics. Any questions about athletics? Mr. White and as well as Mr. Barton and myself had a Google Meet with families of athletes yesterday, was it yesterday?
Yes, it was yesterday.
Yesterday? Just to go over some of the guidelines for our fall two sports. And that seemed to go well. So we will be participating in sports again. The next big change is to ventilation in the HVA systems on page 41. We have added air purifiers to classroom shops, offices, and all designated eating areas in the building, just another mitigation strategy, strategy to ensure health and safety. And there's several changes to, to this area. And this would start on page 22 with responses to symptomatic or test, or to those students and staff who test positive. So there has been a change to the, the isolation time for those individuals testing positive. So if an individual, meaning a staff or student, should test positive, they would need to self-isolate for 10 days or until 24 hours that they were without fever or symptoms. This is a change to prior, which would be, three days would have to pass without a fever or symptoms before you could return to the workplace. Another change to symptomatic or positive test is we will not be requiring a clearance from the Board of Health. That has been eliminated. It just seemed to be taking a lot of time to get that clearance, sometimes weeks. So we are going with the 10 days and 24 hours without symptoms and fever for symptomatic or those individuals testing positive for COVID-19.
Would that, that would be after the 10 days, is that correct?
Excuse me?
That would be after the 10 days.
Yes, 10 days, 10 days of self-isolation. And they must be at the 10th day, 24 hours fever and symptom free versus the 48 hours prior.
And that is done on their own, by their own self?
Yes, it is. So when a staff or student tests positive, for the most part, we have encouraged them to communicate with us. And mostly, they have been communicating with us. And we help them monitor their isolation. Page 43 and 44, response to symptomatic staff at school. There also is a change to that, responding to those who are symptomatic. Again, there's an isolation period of 10 days and 24 hours without a fever versus the three days prior. And again, there's no clearance from Board of Health. On page 45, the close contact quarantine has also changed. And these are all based on the CDC guidelines. Asymptomatic individuals have a 10-day strict quarantine versus the 14-day quarantine previously. And those who develop symptoms and not test have a 14-day quarantine, even if they test negative, they still have to quarantine for 14 days.
How does that affect your attendance? You know, if it's a student?
So if, if, if it's a student, we, they're not penalized for being absent in regards to COVID-19. And we provide them with time to make up their work.
Okay.
And also, if a student has COVID-19 and is asymptomatic, we encourage them to continue to participate in the remote learning process as long as they can and, and they're feeling well, they can participate remotely. So if, moving on to page 45, and we've discussed this at prior meetings, we are now a Bionext Now COVID-19 school, which means we will be able to give the rapid diagnostic test for those staff and students that are symptomatic at school. And just to be clear, that is at school. Those individuals who are symptomatic at home should remain at home. We are not a testing site. It's, it's for those individuals who get ill at school. And, and we have been provided with those testing kits by the state. On page 45, we are also going to be a pool testing school. We have applied to be a pool testing school. And we have received clearance from, from the state. We have been provided with the name of an individual who is going to support us through the process. The Department of Public Education will provide for six weeks of pool testing. And then the district has to pick up the cost of pool testing after, after that. So pool testing again is voluntary, just as Bionext Now testing is voluntary. So teachers and, and students have been sent permission forms, actually have been sent permission forms for Bionext Now to via electronically to become members and give consent to us using the Bionext Now test if they were to become ill at school. As far as pool testing, we have not consented out the consent forms yet. We'll be talking about that a little bit more tomorrow during our weekly COVID-19 meetings. And I think the consent forms are all ready to go out to staff, maybe tomorrow, and students following. I think we're going to wait till the students come back into the building and give them the consent form in person to take home. That seems to work a little bit better than electronically at the moment. So the pool testing consent is required. It's, it consists of, as we talked about, I think at the last meeting, a sampling of anywhere between 10 to 25 individuals. They get sampled. It takes about 24 to 48 hours to get the result. If the pool test comes back negative, then everybody could remain in school. If the pool test comes back positive, that means everybody within the pool would need to get retested. And they call that reflux testing. And we can use our Bionext Now as, as the backup test. And while we are doing that Bionext Now testing, those individuals will need to remain quarantined. So there is a correction to that page on 45 that I just want to be clear, that is not currently in your book. And that is what I just said. If a pool test comes back positive, those individuals in the pool would need to remain quarantined until they were all tested and that test result came back. So one, two, three, four, five, it's the fifth bullet down. The individuals within that pool do and not should be eliminated, have to quarantine while waiting for follow-up testing, period. Unless they are symptomatic, that needs to be removed. I think there was some clarification that came forth today after a meeting with the Department of Education, the Commissioner and the Department of Education. So I just want to make that correction in the book. So I think, I think I'm going to turn it over to Mike right now to talk a little bit about food services and how we're going to distribute meals to our students.
So for the technical programs for the in-person education that are hybrid learning model that will receive, lunch will be served in the cafeteria, the library, and the mall area. The spacing will be six feet apart according to the state regulations. In general terms, we'll be running five lunches as we have in the past. The largest lunch will be the freshman lunch, which is seventh period. Breakfast will be served free for students. The lunch will be purchased with no cash transactions with a school bucks account that they set up and with their ID scanned. That's in general terms, if we did need extra space for lunch, we can use the Artisan Restaurant. We'll be using that on Wednesdays when the freshmen are here in person. So again, for freshmen, the exploratory period, lunch will be served in, in four areas, the Artisan, the library, the mall, and the cafeteria. And if you exit here today and you go through the mall, you'll see that desks are spaced six feet apart. So that's our preparations essentially, so people can, our students can eat lunch safely and comfortably in the circumstances.
And those are the current revisions to the reopening plan to transition back to a hybrid learning environment based on the current regulations.
Mike, will that be about 90 people per lunch?
No, it would be more than that. So the cafeteria fits about 150. The library fits about 50 or 56 in the mall, just under that. So we're looking at over, well over a situation like that.
200.
Yeah.
It's over 200. When we're at 100%.
At 100%.
Yes.
Okay, and then 50%, which is going to start?
Yeah, initially.
Yes.
In mid-February, we're going to be.
February 22nd.
For two weeks, two to four weeks.
Okay. And as far as the pool testing goes, is every student going to be part of a pool?
So no, it's, it's, it's random testing. We're not doing surveillance testing, we're doing pool testing. So you're taking groups. So we'll probably do, would we say about 25 to 50, 25 a week, is that?
A sample, each sample.
25 testing week?
Yes, so there's 25, I think a pool is 1 to 25 individuals in a pool.
Okay, and you're going to be.
So we're, we're going to develop a plan to sort of strategize how to test. And I think we talked about, Mike, just to clarify, different sections of the building?
Yeah, geographically seems to be the recommendation that's been presented to us. Geographically, in terms of sections of the building, you're going systematically floor by floor from section to section. At least that's the initial guidance that we've received.
Mm-hmm.
So roughly five tests per day?
No, per, so no, it's.
25 tests per week?
Yes.
So roughly five tests per day?
Well, you have to test the pool in one shot.
Right.
So yes, so if, we're going to pick days because I think, and we haven't picked a day yet. Again, we're speaking about this a little bit more tomorrow, that it would be the testing day, then you have to wait 24 to 48 hours. And then you have to retest if anybody in the, if the pool tests positive. So.
Probably the earlier the better.
Kind of strategize the day of the week to do it. I think we talked about Monday with having two days, with Wednesday being a backup test, retesting day.
Then our nurses are conducting those tests?
Yes, our, our nurses are conducting those tests. And, and we did, we do have a nursing agency on contract. We did post for a, a part-time nurse or a substitute nurse to assist because, just to assist, not knowing what to expect when we return and where the workload would be. We did, we do have the opportunity to bring in assistance to help our nurses if we need it to.
And as far as the pool testing goes, it's 15 people in my pool. One person gets the test?
No, all 15 people get the test. If one person comes back positive, you all have to be retested.
Okay.
So they don't, you don't know who comes, so it's.
No, we don't know, right, it's the pool.
So they just retest everybody in the pool, correct?
Okay.
It's just another mitigating strategy, mitigation strategy to ensure the health and safety. So I think as a school, I think we've done a, a great job with mitigation strategies as far as our ventilation, as far as our, you know, our mask restrictions, our social distancing, now the pool testing and the Bionext testing. So I'm confident that our returning to school on February 22nd.
You put a lot of thought into it, great work, so.
Yeah, just to take a moment again to thank the, the Reopening Task Force Two who, who helped to develop this plan and really helped to schedule. A lot of work went into the exploratory piece of it, the scheduling piece of it, scheduling students. So thank you. The scheduling piece of it, uh, scheduling students, uh, so thank you, Mr. Barton and the. The uh teachers, administrators, support staff, that were all part of the reopening task force too. Again, uh, this has been a very difficult time for everybody and really working together has really uh. Gotten us through this, so I appreciate everyone and and all the help. Uh, that everyone has put forth to be able to transition safely back to to in-person learning for our students. So thank you, so I'm looking for approval of the reopening plan.
We're starting February twenty-second, is that correct?
Yeah.
And that's gonna be with hybrid model B phase one?
Correct.
And then hybrid model B phase two?
So that's either within two or four weeks after phase one. Uh, depending on where we are with the public health data and having conversations with our teachers bargaining unit and our. Uh, power professionals bargaining unit, yes.
Like today, I just looked at the numbers actually with Mike and uh, and we went down in low from seven to six percent, I'm looking at. The chart, four percent, it's actually right there, and I know we're we're doing the two to four week thing.
So yeah, so yellow means that you're, is also hybrid. I think we're looking for, as we said earlier, before we can do anything more than what we're proposing. They would have to reduce some restrictions and reduce the restrictions about around busing.
Well, that that's what I'm getting at, because we're going into the MOA, MOU. If we, next week we hit green at law. And this is hypothetical, the next two weeks after that are green, does that supersede the um, the?
So even if the two weeks are green, we still, they have not lifted any restrictions, so right now. If we to, it, right now, the color chart and waiting the three weeks sort of changed a while ago. So what they're saying is once you're in the yellow, you should, you should be starting to try to bring back your students, beginning with the hybrid. Uh, and and which we are doing, we're bringing back fifty percent of our technical students initially and then a hundred percent on a shop week. But we can't do anything more than that until they reduce restrictions. Uh, because we just can't feed them, we we don't have an area to to feed them, uh. Unless they reduce the restrictions.
Yeah, the four to six to three.
Yep.
Okay, no, I just wanna make sure, cuz I'm looking at the chart and I'm reading it. And then here it's saying.
Transportation is a big piece too.
Right, no, no, cuz I'm, obviously we have restrictions on the bus with students.
Mm-hmm.
And how many buses we can get, I just wanna make sure cuz I'm, in the um, in the agreement. Under the community health, it just says, there's a gray, green or yellow, expect their students learning fully in person. So I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page, it it, it does say it feasible, it feasible, and it's not feasible if they don't lower the. Re- uh restrictions.
Feasible unless, right.
Okay, that's what I, I just wanna make sure.
Particularly in lunch and transportation, the state still maintains six feet in lunch areas.
Okay.
And that's curtailing our ability to bring everyone back.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Mister Getia?
Yes.
Mister Sheen?
Yes.
Mister Bahu?
Yes.
Mister O'Heer?
Yeah.
Mister Tatsias?
Yes.
Mister Gigi?
Yeah.
Mister Moran?
Yes.
Great work, thank you.
Just an added factor that's not in the reopening plan, but we, we, we are providing uh our teachers. Uh, an opportunity, those, those teachers or those staff that have uh school-aged children. Uh, we have developed a learning pod uh within the building for school-aged children. That can seat up to, uh, I think twelve, maybe fifteen, uh, if if we needed to. So it is, it is being occupied, that started this week with the return of teachers to working in the building. And I think currently, we have a maximum, I think, one day of six uh, six staff. Uh, using it for their children.
I, I, that's, that's great, I didn't thank everybody too, I wanna jump on what you said, I thank everybody involved. You and Mike were hot at this in the reopening committee and everybody that was involved, teachers, staff, everybody. You know, everybody that's been in the building, so I just wanna thank them and just glad we're getting the kids back in here.
Thank you.
And I would like to say that they've done a great job.
The next item on uh my agenda is the Student Opportunity Act, which is the S, otherwise known as the SOA Plan. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Barton to assist and and speak a little bit about the SOA Plan, we did, uh. It was approved last year, however, the funding uh was not provided for it at the time. So we are now going to be given the funding uh to move forward with the SOA Plan. Uh, and we have made some revisions to the plan that we want to be, get approved tonight. So we can officially submit the plan to the Department of Education. So I'm gonna turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent to talk about the SOA Plan.
Okay, thank you, so the SOA Plan, uh, the main focus is on student subgroups, students in groups. That are then identified by the state to be uh in areas of focus to increase student achievement. And those specific groups are students with disabilities, the Asian subgroup. Uh, low-income students, English language learners and high-need students, so along with the MCAS tests and a variety of other factors. These are the groups that the state has asked us to target in terms of student achievement. So those are the groups that we've, um, that were, will, particularly the SOA Plan chooses to focus on in terms of increasing not only their MCAS performance. But their uh attendance rates, uh, student discipline uh rates. Uh, as well as their overall emotional and uh social emotional health. So uh in terms of that, in terms of everyday learning and everyday teaching and and learning, the plan. Uh, chooses to focus on those student groups. The other two aspects that the plan focuses on is uh trying to prevent course failures. Uh, so course failures are certainly a concern, I think nationwide. Uh, particularly after the pandemic or during the pandemic, so it chooses to look for opportunities to provide remediation. Opportunities for extra assistance both after school and during school. Um, for students to uh get that attention that they need. Particularly, I think this is important because as we transition to the next year, there will definitely be some learning gaps. Um, in all grades, so it's critical that we focus on on that. It also chooses to focus on social emotional learning and student discipline in terms of relationship building, in terms of better understanding. Um, regarding how to have conversations with students, how to have students open up. Um, and build a better rapport with students, as well as um making connections so students feel comfortable, safe. In the environment with all teachers, counselors, as well as uh, you know, the main office staff. So those are the three uh really broad areas that the SOA Plan uh focuses on. Within that, there's a a variety of positions that were approved last year. Um, uh, in terms of special ed, instructional staff, English instructional staff, math, English language learners. Uh, the main office, as well as counselors. Um, the two new positions are, rather, the the new aspects that have been included this year that Superintendent spoke about. Is a new reading instructor. Um, going along with what I said earlier about uh achievement gaps. Uh, basically, kids not being in school, uh, not being with their peers, not being with adults, uh, their language acquisition is gonna fall back. People need to be with each other to acquire a language, to build on their reading skills. So, uh, in order to um continue working towards some of the reading gaps that we've seen. And the testing that we've seen in previous, last year and previous years, and also ones that we anticipate next year. Are searching for another reading instructor. As well as um resurrecting or building up a literacy action team, so that team. Will be comprised of technical and academic instructors that will provide, that will acquire targeted professional development, targeted. Um, strategies and methods to help other teachers develop uh lessons that incorporate literacy. For example, just to bring it down to to the, I guess, the ground level view. Um, I'll give you an example, science is an area that we struggle in. Uh, vocabulary in biology is very difficult for uh people who read at the highest level. And certainly people who might be learning English for the first time. So, uh, it's the hope that this literacy action team will be able to work with teachers such as science teachers or technical teachers. To develop um methods of instruction and strategy that will help them. Uh, not only teach science, but also view things through the lens of kids that are struggling reading. Uh, so that they can assist in um making sure kids feel confident. So basically, you know, when you encounter words in biology that you're unfamiliar with, you might just turn off. So we're looking to find ways to prevent that from happening. Um, the, uh, just turn some pages here, so those are really the broad-based aspects of the plan. Um, there was previously uh some software and hardware that was purchased. Uh, with funds that we had from last year that we, we were able to purchase for social emotional learning, uh, closing achievement gaps. Um, but overall, again, it's focused on looking specifically at those groups of kids that are struggling. Putting positions in place so that we can close those achievement gaps. Um, in terms of um instruction in those particular group areas.
And providing professional development to support.
Providing professional development and access to different resources.
These positions, uh, these things we talked about earlier today.
Yeah, exactly, so uh previously in the budget meeting, that was where we went into some uh additional details about those positions. Uh, so these are just really broad-based strokes about this particular plan. That was approved last year and and this year, um, we're looking for approval again.
Any question?
Emotional except, sorry.
Mister Getia?
Yes.
Mister Sheen?
Yes.
Mister Bahu?
Yes.
Mister O'Heer?
Yeah.
Mister Tatsias?
Yes.
Mister Gigi?
Mister Gigi?
Yeah, yeah.
Mister Moran?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of why we closed today.
Okay, thank you, uh, for the business manager.
I have two things on my agenda site, the first is just a short list of transfers that came um. Almost solely from departmental requests. Um, for individuals that were either running short in one account and had money in another account, just to try to even those things out. Um, and also at the bottom of the list, there is one request to upgrade, or to move funds. Excess funds we have in health insurance to the library tech equipment account, which will be used actually not in the library, but in the cafeteria. Um, the cafeteria has become sort of a central gathering place in the building, it's one of our only larger spaces and. Uh, the audio that was set up in there initially for remote mics um is is insufficient. Um, given the amount of use it gets today, um, so we're looking to upgrade the audio in there. Uh, to make the space more functional as a, a large gathering space in the building.
You need a motion approval?
I do. I lost my total.
Mister Sheen, Mister Tatsias.
Mister Getia?
Yes.
Mister Sheen?
Yes.
Mister Bahu?
Yes.
Mister O'Heer?
Yeah.
Mister Tatsias? Mister Gigi?
Yeah.
Mister Moran?
Yes.
All right, the second item on my agenda, um, came from a little bit of, um. Not, not a s- a surprise, but um, a little bit of, um, yeah, I guess it was a surprise for me. Um, on the payroll sheets a couple of weeks ago. Um, so we had come to talk to you about the LPN uh program a few months back and. How they were going to have a need for increased staff. Um, in that program because of the new ratios that were being required for the students to go out on their clinical site evaluation. Or on clinical site trainings. Um, what we found is that the hiring of of nursing staff, particularly where they're in such high demand today, has been um difficult. So in my um discussions with Christine and and what she's done for hiring and how we've went about. Searching for employees, we couldn't find any deficiency in the advertising or outreach or any of that that was going on, so then. I said, there's gotta be a reason, so I looked into the rates of pay that we were offering. Um, we are significantly below uh average. Um, and even, I think we're the lowest out of all the schools that we could get data from within the state. Um, at the current, we are paying thirty-eight dollars an hour for the LPN clinical instructors. The average for the state is about forty-nine point nine-one dollars per hour. And then um I just tried to highlight a couple of local programs that were similar to us, uh, Shashin, Asabit. Um, some of those others in, um, really no matter how I broke down the, the averages, we were well below and they were all coming out. Closer to that fifty-dollar range, uh, as opposed to where we stood at that thirty-eight. Um, so in an effort to get our staff up to what would be, I guess, market rate for these positions. Um, but without going to the higher end of the market. I was bringing a recommendation to move the LPN clinical instructors to a forty-five dollar an hour range. This will also prevent us from experiencing overtime costs. Um, at current, we have some teachers that are helping out and graciously offering to do doubles. Um, which means that they're coming in doing two back-to-back six-and-a-half-hour shifts with students. Plus uh the prep time that's required and the grading time for the after the fact, so. Um, we have a couple of staff that are putting in fourteen, sixteen-hour days on the regular. Uh, which very quickly adds up when you have, when you look at even the overtime rate at about fifty-seven dollars an hour.
What's your overtime?
Uh, overtime's fifty-seven an hour.
I I guess the only question I have is forty. If the average is forty-nine ninety-one, is forty-five enough to attract what we need?
I looked, really, this was me maybe being a little bit more narrow-minded, I just tried to find the two most similar programs. Shashin offering a program um down the road and Asabit also being sort of regionally similar and a similar setup. Um, they were both at that forty-five range. Felt like a big jump to go eleven bucks an hour, but I think it was, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with going to what I would see as average.
No, what what I'm looking at is Northern Essex, which is Haver, which is sixty-one, it, it's not that far up the road.
No, I mean, there's certainly, I think everywhere, nurses at this point, and and I think thirty-eight dollars an hour is definitely not gonna get them in the door.
No, I'm I'm just wondering if forty-five is, you know, the average is forty-nine ninety-one, I mean.
Well, that's, a lot of those are community colleges, but I mean, I'm open to the idea of maybe making it forty-seven?
Yeah, look at, I'm I'm fine, I'm just wondering what it's gonna take to get them in the door because I, I mean, it's obviously not healthy for them working doubles either. I mean, there is a nursing shortage and I get it, but it's also not healthy. I mean, I just, I'm just wondering if forty-five is enough, that that's all I'm wondering.
Mister Sheen, do you feel like you could um hire more staff, more nursing staff, if you offered them a larger rate of pay?
Um, it would help, um, but right now hiring nurses is really tough. Um, I had to increase my um, my nurses because I had to cut down on how many students. And I got so desperate that I had to go to my Facebook page. And I hired off of my Facebook page, um, two former um graduates. Um, it, you know, because it it's that difficult to try to get nurses. Um, they send us um emails all the time to the DPH to try to um fill. And help with the vaccination clinics, they're even reaching out to nursing school saying, we'll take a nursing student. Um, we are actually going to be working with Lowell General. Um, after the tw- the twenty-first with your vaccination clinic, um, to help out the. Um, it it's hard to get nurses, it's hard to get nurses.
So is it all about the rate of pay, or is it that just a nurses are such a, such a high demand? It's both?
I think it's both, and I, another thing that um I, I need to recognize for my staff is. Ten out of thirteen of them have master's degrees in nursing education. Um, with one more that's gonna be getting hers this year, so I have highly, highly qualified. Um, and they're doing me favors, do- doing, like I said, doing doubles, um, splitting weekends. Um, we're doing the best we can with what, what we have.
Good, so now I guess it's coming up to a rate of pay recommendation.
Yeah, I, I just don't think forty-five's gonna cut it right now, I I really don't. Yeah, I I just don't think forty-five's gonna cut it right now. I I I really don't. I don't think we're gonna get what we need at forty-five.
The forty-seven work, or would you like to go higher than that?
I I, I'm just looking at the average of forty-nine ninety-one, throw the extra nine cents and call it fifty. That's what I'm sa- that's what I'm thinking, fifty bucks and.
I agree with that.
I was a little conservative, but.
No, no, Mike, I'm just.
You're a boy.
No, I'm just looking, I look at, I don't wanna give money away, but I just don't think we're gonna get what we need.
Yeah, I can definitely see that.
No.
Put in the motion, but. I mean, motion to make the.
We're competing with schools that are closest to us.
Well, they're at forty-five.
If you have to travel too far, the extra isn't gonna cut it. I think forty-five is the reason. If you look, you know, I mean, what, uh. If you look at the the ones that are paying the highest. You know, we're not even, I mean, Quincy College, Quayson, Monds, Community College, you know.
I'm not sure Community College is competitive. More than Essex is competitive.
I I will say I did this this sort a couple of different ways. I only included the one. One of the ways I did it was I took everything within thirty miles.
Yeah.
Average was still very close to that forty-nine-dollar range. It didn't really matter how I broke it out, so I took a sort and I took the, you know, the top three schools removed and took the bottom three and removed and ran the average. I mean, every time I was coming out between forty-eight, seventy, and just forty-nine and change. I mean, the fact of the matter is, I I think it's just that that seems.
I mean, I think Christine is also saying that nurses are highly qualified, that they have master's degrees.
So, I took the, yeah, I took, when I sorted by the hourly, I took the lowest hourly. Some places pay different based on a bachelor's of nursing versus a master's of nursing. Some of those master's of nursing rates were in the hundreds of dollars, or a hundred and ninety an hour, those those are ranges, which were. I mean, they were very high up there, but um this was, this was what I could find as, I think, the best comparable group.
So. You can also increase this year and see how that works out.
Yeah.
And then possibly do it maybe next year as well.
Look, I'm open to anything on it, I just, I just, if we're not getting anybody biting for what we have, we have to change it.
Yeah.
So, I'm open for anything. I mean, I guess my next question is, I know we had, I know you you were here a couple, uh, about a month ago, two months ago. We were talking about lowering the, like, going up on the rate. Because, you know, we we wanted to get the students in here, is this gonna affect that?
I don't believe so. So, the, where we established the tuition rate was sustainable in my mind, even with.
With this increase in pay.
Um, looking at how the pro- how the program is done in the past. Um, we were looking at probably, or almost definitely losing money in the program, but with the tuition increase. I think we'll be very close to a break even at the forty-five, the forty difference between forty-five and forty-nine is not gonna break the bank either.
I I'd just like to make a motion to make it fifty dollars an hour.
I'll second that. And then maybe we can revisit this in a couple of months.
Yeah.
And just to see where our path's going financially and staff-wise, see if it's actually working.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome.
You're good?
You wouldn't like me to re-read it?
So, is it to approve the L P N clinical instructors to fifty dollars per hour?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Getia?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hea?
Yeah.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Um, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, uh.
Thank you very much.
Old business.
You're welcome very much.
Thank you, old business.
Well, we appreciate our nurses.
Any items not on the agenda brought up under this section will be discussed for purposes, other purposes only. Outstanding items, new business. Committee chairperson motions, report of subcommittees. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Sheen. Second.
Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Getia?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hea?
Yeah.
Tatsias?
Yeah.
Mr. Gigi?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.